Welcome, everybody. This is the regular meeting of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. For Tuesday, October twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. I'll call the meeting order. Rob, you want to start?
Rob Horegon.
John Smolaga.
Melanie Jollin.
Roz.
And that's it, right?
That's it right now.
Okay, I will see Kathy for Sue Fitch. And I will see Melanie for Sierra. So we do have a quorum. So Kathy and Melanie, that means you're voting members right now, so you could totally partake. When you're not a voting member, when there's a motion made, you can't make any any more questions, stuff like that. That's and you don't vote. So that's the difference.
Okay, understand.
So we'll go to so I sat the members communication with the public. This is the first selectment. Did you have something to share?
I I do have something to share. Um, I it kind of started out as a weird turn of events, but I found out last week that they were going to be draining Lake Lenona. Um, and that is happening as we speak, actually, tonight into tomorrow. So tomorrow, which should be lowered. This is something that happens only once a year. Um, so I met with Brian Wood from C T Department of Public Works. Because I'd like to do some repairs to the boat ramp. Um, if you guys have ever used it as boat ramp, it's pretty chopped up down at the bottom. Uh, and a lot of more people were using it, um, even with canoes and kayaks and everything else. And we want to make it a little bit safer there. Uh, so I met with them, um, and we're going to be doing some patching, but it's all going to be permitted. It's all going to be approved. Uh, and maybe some rock on the side. He didn't like some of the erosion that was going on, so he wants us to do some extra work, uh, which I thought was good. Um, and I just thought that I should let the uh, the commission know um, of what we had planned. Um, but it was just more of a sense of urgency thing to get it done before they raise the water again.
Well, you need a permit from us, right?
I do not. It's just a repair.
Ah.
According to them, I don't. Yep, it's a first light property, apparently. So they uh, they they issue the permits on this. So I don't think I do, and you could correct me if I'm wrong.
I'll correct you.
Oh, I do. Okay.
You gotta, you gotta get the permit from first light first.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
And you can't come to us until you get it from them first. Then you have to come to us. But seeing that it's a maintenance activity, you could ask the wetland enforcement officer to approve it as such by filling out a non-inquiry form and having him go on a look and agree that it's not something that needs to come to the commission.
Will do. That'll be done tomorrow.
All right.
Hey, I I have a question. Patrick, what's your timeframe on getting this done? When when are they going to be looking to raise the water again?
Um, it it's gonna be down for approximately two weeks.
Okay.
Um, so they don't have a lot of time.
No, it's not a lot of time. Um, and like I said, this is only something that they happens uh, once a year. Um, he did uh, make some suggestions of pressure treating or a pressure washing uh, the ramp as it is because of all the algae, nothing's going to stick to it. So uh, we'll bring the water truck down. I mean, they had some great suggestions and he was very uh, supportive of us trying to repair it. So uh, he said basically, so we meet again uh, Friday at noon, once the water level is down and everything's been clean.
Okay. Next is approval of the minutes from the August meeting. Everybody look at the minutes. Any comments? I'll look for a motion to approve those minutes.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right, moving right along. Uh, Grebla fifty-five Garnet Road, tree cutting and regulated area. Attorney Neil Marcus sent us a letter dated October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two outlining a site visit that John Cody and I attended. When was that, John? Last Tuesday, right?
Correct.
And Neil, I I have nothing but the utmost respect for Mr. Marcus. He's a great, great guy and a good attorney, a great attorney. But Neil and I differ here. Uh, and and you know, we we went to the site where there were trees cut down. And many months ago, we asked the simple question of the applicant, or actually, she didn't apply. We John Cody asked her to stop cutting trees at the time. She only cut a couple. And she didn't and submit a permit and she didn't. She decided not to do that and just cut down what she wanted to cut down. And we had a notice of violation issued, which she didn't respond to, and then we had to do a cease and desist. We were forced to do that. And we require two simple things that the cease and desist. Hire a soil scientist to tell us uh, his opinion or or her opinion on whether there's wetland soils and whether this is an intermittent stream. And Gil had written letters saying that professionals, people who are qualified could determine if it's an intermittent stream. It doesn't need to be a soil scientist. And that could be people who are on the commission. If you're certified, which we all are. And and in my case, and in John Cody's case, uh, we have a lot of years' experience doing this. To put it, to make this short and sweet, um, Neil disagrees that this is an intermittent stream because there's no channel running through her yard. But unfortunately, she denuded the channel and basically ran all kinds of equipment to cut down twenty or so trees, clear cut. Neil also makes the case that this is a residential exemption, which I disagree with. If you look at the legislative history, clear cutting was not intended to be a residential exemption. She was warned before she did this to get a permit or at least get a non, a non-regulated inquiry. She refused to do that. She refused to hire a soil scientist. So Neo and I and Neo and I get along really well. We we walked up and I showed him where this intermittent stream goes through two or three different properties. And there's culverts at two driveways, so the intermittent stream is allowed to pass through. It comes down alongside a driveway, crosses the road where road drainage goes in and then goes on to Miss Grebless property. And there is a a channel for about ten feet in and then then it's gone. And then I walked down to the other end of the property because she did allow us on the property. She didn't like my dog was there, but too bad. And I found low and behold, the other end of the intermittent stream after, you know, after all the where it wasn't disturbed and that intermittent stream continues on. But the fact is, Neo and I could argue till they till we're blue in the face, which I hope we don't argue to that point. Whether it's an intermittent stream or not, to to wait to solve the problem instead of playing legal antics and stating exemptions that really don't apply and telling us what it isn't and when we know, when we've all looked at it and we know what it is. Get a soil scientist, which we asked for over five months ago, and have them determine it. And hopefully, it's a good one. It's not a hand for hire. We know there's a lot of hand for hires out there, you know, paying money. They'll say whatever you want. Uh, if it's a reputable soil scientist, then we could all agree to go from there. The commission could have the choice at that time to hire our own uh, soil scientist to review that person's report and either to agree, to disagree, or to agree. And quite frankly, if it's non-regulated, then we didn't need to go through all this process, but we asked for that five months ago. And she still refuses to do it. However, Neil says that he will hire a professional. And I agreed with Neil on site. It's very hard to find these people nowadays because they're all swamped. And I I know that for fact. So Neil asked for a month's extension to find that person, let him do their work and submit the letter to the commission. It isn't my decision to do that. I highly recommend we do that. But it's up to the commission whether we want to give them another month or whatever we want to do. The cease and desist order is still in effect. And it will remain in effect until she proves to us that whether this is a regulated area or not. If it's not, then we could do what we got to do at that time. But again, she could have saved herself a lot of money, the town a lot of money. The commission a lot of time, and the only one who won on this one is Neil. But we could, we could know at that time whether it's regulated or not, at least get a second opinion. Another option, which I don't recommend, is to instruct Dale to go to court now and have the court assess whether to find they're going to assess because we we have more than enough information and data to say that she's refused to cooperate with the commission, whether it's regulated or not. She isn't cooperating and maybe the court could force her to. But I think Neil being retained was a good thing because Neil will cooperate and at least get us to some point where we could get this off our docket. Um, or and that's it. Basically, do we allow them another month? I know. I know they've had many months. Should have done this a long time ago. I got it. But I think going to court is not a good idea at this point, and we should give them another month. That's my recommendation.
I agree with you, Russ.
Okay.
Um, yeah, I I agree with you, Russ, here too, because, um, yeah, I mean, going to court, it it's just going to leave us in the same place and in the end, I think, where an expert's going to have to come in or or something like that. So, uh, yeah, yeah.
Kathy, you agree?
Yeah, I I agree. I'm just putting, I'm just putting the calendar in front of me, looking at. So we're almost to the beginning. So we're into end of November, beginning December, bumping up, starting to bump up against holidays and such. So I I think, are we saying thirty days, like firm on thirty days?
Neil, I know you're on the call. Are you on the call, Neil? You are.
Yes, sir.
Uh, is thirty days enough?
Well, I'll tell you, yesterday I got a call back from Jim McManus, who finally returned my call. It actually apologized for being a little swamped, as you just said. I didn't catch him today. I'll catch him tomorrow. I'll know a little bit better when I talk to him. But I think he should be able to go out. And once I get him on the site, it's, you know, it's it's a couple of hours of work for him. It's not a lot of work. So why don't we leave it at thirty days? And if I really have a a problem with with him and I can't get anybody else, then I'll let you know. But I think I'll have it in thirty days.
Okay.
Nick, Neil, if you throw enough money at him, he should do it.
Yeah. Well, we're we're thinking, we're thinking of holding a fundraiser tonight, if anybody's interested in contributing. You know, comment on the chairman's uh, comments here. He said he came out with his dog. I thought he brought the enforcement officer, but I didn't realize that's what we refer to him as. Thank you, Russ. No, we will get, we'll get out. By the way, that's a reasonable, your editorial comments aside, it's a reasonable analysis of where we are.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I agree as well.
All right, Melanie?
I agree as well.
Okay. All right, then we'll move on. We'll uh, wait another thirty days. The cease and desist will be remain in effect and hopefully we get to the end of this.
Yeah, she's not planning to do any work. And by the way, interestingly, there was work being flagged out on the road and the culverts in front of her house today. So I'm not sure what the town.
They're gonna grade the road.
That's what I figured. Just.
Yeah, uh, uh, they they want us to call whenever we grade. Couple of years ago, we hit a cable line and we never called. And so, right, Patrick? Or are you doing something else on Garnet? Getting ready to pave it or something?
No. No, I just, it's just, yeah, it's a call before you dig.
Okay.
So those Belgium blocks were not for the new curb. Okay, I understand. Thank you, guys.
All right, Neil, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to Stone Led Sam LLC sixteen Painter Hill Road Dead Tree Removal New Plantings Report on Site Walk. Who did that one?
Did all of you guys meet last Saturday or two Saturdays ago?
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. I'm thinking Painter Hill Road. I'm thinking, I'm thinking about the top and it's just down on the bottom. Unfortunately, we've had numerous complaints and numerous issues with the silt getting in the stream. My good friend, Georgette Miller, called me, said the stream is all silt just the other day, which is strange because it didn't rain. But as we discussed in the last meeting, you know, that the erosion control failed during a four-inch rain form, rainstorm. Paul Shimansky maintains it was an eightage. Maybe at his house, it wasn't at my house, but regardless, the erosion controls failed and silt got into the stream. John Cody told Paul he needed to fix this immediately. They immediately went on out and added stone to the end of the driveway. Hey, bales, pretty good silt control. Um, had a rainstorm. There didn't seem to be a problem. And then all of a sudden, we see silt in the stream during a non-rain event. And pretty much what's happened is there's a lot of sediment in the catch basins from that release. And the stream coming into the pond is causing turbulence enough where there's such fine stuff. It's like talcum powder. It it it's all, the pond is all muddy and the stream got muddy. Things look a lot better today, but so I called Mr. Shimansky, told him, you got to do something about this. We're not going to sit back and let this keep happening at any rainfall because your erosion control is failing. We would nor normally note issue a notice of violation, but when people cooperate, a notice violation doesn't really do any good but to slow it down. So I don't want to slow it down. So what they did is they cleaned out the catch basins. They met with Peter Herbert, who owns the pond. They're gonna lower the pond and get rid of some of the silt that's in there. And they put an anti-flagellant into the pond. It's environmentally friendly to get that sediment to settle out. So, John, you need to keep your eye on it on a constant basis, especially when it's raining. Uh, if you do go, I I will go out next time it rains and really take a look of. You know, I really think they need to get their plan that they have for erosion control built uh, now and not wait. Uh, and and one thing I learned from this whole exercise is don't let them cut into the drive into the hillside until they build their erosion controls first. And that's what down the road, that's what I'm going to be looking for is that what your plan shows as a finished project, you need to build your uh, detention basin first. And that way, that gets silted up and you got to deal with it and not the nice guy across the street. And I'm sure Peter was very nice about it. And, um, you know, there's a lot of people upset because they have ponds on the side of that stream or along that stream. So we'll have to see what happens. But, John, we need to keep a good eye on it.
Yeah, that's no problem. Russ, actually, I've got a photograph from Paul Simanski today of the water coming off the driveway and it was all clear.
Okay. So we did a site walk, myself, Sue Fitch, Kathy, um, who else was there? Was it just us?
Yep, yep, just us.
And and RJ, RJ was there.
Of course.
Yeah. So, um, I don't have a problem with anything I saw and anything that was explained to me as far as what they want to do with uh, diversifying the forest by taking out some invasive trees, replacing it with natural trees, but doing it with different tree types. Uh, the erosion up top, you know, the the drainage, the stormwater erosion controls up top to where it leads to the hill all seem really good to me. It's really the problems on the bottom where there's there's uh, steep cuts, you know, you've got sidewalls of dirt that. So I I thought it was a good walk and I I was happy with what I saw other than sediment on the road and uh, it seems to be a continuing problem. Anybody else, Kathy?
Yeah, I agree, Russ. I mean, I think there were seven crossings, right, as we walked up the driveway. So, um, each of them, we examined and looked at uh, kind of the control that they had on the downside and looked um, looked to be doing what it's intended to do.
Yeah, they did a good job with the crossing. Actually, they've done a good job with everything but the bottom and and not getting control of what's draining out of sight. Rob, did you have anything to say? Because I know you've looked at this because you drive by it every day.
Well, I just think that the uh, the banks need need to be stabilized and, you know, I I mean, there's a lot of different ways that you can control that water. You know, but I I think it's, you know, the engineers need to come up with a way to control it, the water that's coming off that hill. You know, it's typical Roxbury uh, glacial till. There's a lot of high groundwater. No place to go.
But the engineer is telling us he does have control. And he did ask if he needed to be here tonight because he had to be at a met another meeting. And I did tell him, no, you know, let the commission discuss it. But are you sure you got control of this? And he said, yes. And I said, well, I'll tell you, if this happens again, there is going to be a notice of violation and a potential fine i- if you don't get control of this. But, Rob, are there things you think they need to do bef- you know, now? They did, they did put in, they did put in swales.
I I know it's always.
There before.
It's always, there's just a lot of disturbance. You know, there's a lot of, you know, uh, un, you know, a lot of banks of dirt. You know, so until you have growth on those banks or it controlled with, you know, juke cloth or things like that, I just think it will you know, be a continuing problem. But I'm not, I'm not the engineer, Russ. I mean, they they can, I'm I'm sure, you know, Paul will come up with a way to control it.
All right, I'll send him an email tomorrow stating what I stated, but have it in writing that, you know, if you don't get control of this, there will be a fine and an NOV. So if you're comfortable with what you got, great. But if anything more happens, um, if there's more you could do, you should do it, right?
Is it? So so, Russ, I was just going to make a comment, which is, you know, we looked at the crossings, right? But at the bar, I mean, it seems it's such a huge cut, right? The driveway itself, the water seems to be coming right straight down the driveway, which is was not the focus. Our focus was on those seven crossings. And at the bottom, while we were waiting for everybody to gather, both Sue and I stepped right where the driveway meets Painter Hill. And um, there was some some um, hay laid down, but we were ankle deep in water. So, um, and that, and it hadn't rained in, I don't know, twenty-four hours anyway, at least. So that was standing water right there. So so it's coming off the, you know, it's a different uh, it's coming down, straight down the driveway, I think.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah. It might say that they need to redo their design and have a part of me, ma'am. That's a, that's a great, it's a great, at the bottom of the driveway before it meets the road. Because if creates a problem for the town, it's going to create a problem for the wetlands. You know, so. All right. I will send an email to Paul tomorrow. Bakesley Carriage Lane, single-family dwelling, lot number sixty. Are you here tonight?
Um, yeah, we're on the the call here, me and uh, my wife, Rachel. This is Nick.
Nick?
Yep.
You needed to wait before you got a permit before you cleared that lot.
So did you know that? I did not, and that was a big misunderstanding, I I thought, because it was out of the the realm of wetlands in general or within, out of the three hundred foot range of that wetlands that's marked. I was under the understanding that we can uh, take down the trees that we had there.
Well, I hope Rachel beats you tonight.
Oh, she always does. Don't worry.
Couple of things, Nick, and I I know it's because these things are complicated and people don't understand. And luckily, there's no environmental damage. But in Connecticut, whenever you clear more than a quarter acre, regardless of wetlands, you need a permit. And the reason for that is you got to have stormwater controls up. You have to have silt fence, hay bales, things like that. There's no erosion control there.
Correct. And and I actually went down and bought three hundred liter feet today of the silt fence, and I'm assuming the main areas would be where the edge of the driveway is and at the base where the hill drops off there.
At at the base is is important. So Julie, could we get the map up? So, Nick, that's number one, you know, it's a state requirement. It's not a state permit. You got to get the permit from us. And then number two is, you know, when when you build a house, regardless of wetlands, you got to have a wetland permit or zoning will not, will not accept your application. They'll accept it, but they won't act on it until we give you approval. And it's not about wetlands because we've learned that you could be thousands of feet from a wetland but and still have an impact. So
Right.
Our job is to make sure that even though you're far away from wetlands, that you do things right and you don't have an impact.
I agree.
Um,
We have the second page. It'll give you the septic and everything.
Yeah, luck luckily, the wetlands are way back in the woods. Um,
Yeah, I understand the concern though, because that is a big drop off and and you know, the silt is washing down that.
Well, I I just wanted to make sure that they weren't right at the base of that. Because, um, if they were, then there's a serious problem, but they're a ways away.
Hold on. Technical difficulty.
But I I'm wondering, you know, again, and there's so much to know. But you can't just take stumps and dump them down a hill. That's not allowed under state regulation either. Stumps have to be taken out. You can't bury them. We used to bury them. You're not allowed to bury them. But I I wouldn't think you'd want to live with a brand-new house with a nice pool with all those stumps just thrown down the hillside like that. Was that your plan?
Um, I mean, to be honest with you, we'd have the fence along that that line there. And I I figured I read the, what I understood was as long as they're not buried, then we could dispose of them. You know, along that hillside, you know, obviously with trucking and diesel the way it is now. Like you said, it would be a nicer look without them there, definitely, but I guess overlook that.
All right, well, it's not in a wetland, so I'll let the commission decide whether they really want to leave the huge tree stumps on the side of the hill, but the wetland is probably I'd say at least fifty, sixty feet from there, Nick.
Yeah, I mean, with this, I was scaling it a little earlier. Um, I mean, if you look at where the wetlands is, it gives you the fifty-foot uh, back set and then.
Yeah, would you go to the wetland, Julie?
It's looking about a hundred feet off the edge, and then you have four hundred and twenty-one feet to the edge of the septic there. Uh, I think it's on the next page.
Yeah, that's kind of a close-up.
Should be one more.
So the commission, where you see future pool area and that embankment there is just a bunch of stumps and dirt. They just pushed rocks over the hillside. But the wetland is, we'll, we'll find out right now.
The whole thing, whereabouts you? You want me to go with the wetland?
It should be one more page over and it'll have the the outline of the wetlands at the base there.
I don't have that. I have.
We had it up before. Yeah, there you go.
This is the one. Okay, let me.
So what's the distance of that arrow? Does see the line? It shows it on the, if you go to the right. So what's the distance of that arrow to see the line? It shows it on the, if you go to the right.
The closest.
That's all right. It, it's at least 50, 60 feet of flat. It's flat, flat and nothing's going to get in that wetland. We just wanted to go out and look at it. The other concern I had will really be the first selectmen. Pat, what they did is they caught, there's a, there's a. Six foot, five foot high. Uh, they just cut a straight line and it's probably 10 feet, five feet off of the road. So I'm sure that they excavated on, and within the town right away. I'm not worried about the road giving way, but in time, I am worried.
So with that, Russ, definitely, um, so what was there? There was actually rock. We started piling it towards that, uh. That larger rock formation that's in the corner there. There was.
Right, that, that huge piece of ledge, yeah.
So that's where that was. It was all rock that came out of there. There was no dirt, but we are going to fill that back out and, and grade it to us, uh. Less of a steep slope there so that we hold that for erosion.
Okay, good, because I, I'm not worried about that in an immediate sense, but I'm worried about it over time. Again, it has nothing to do with wetlands. It has to do with the town road and, and digging, digging it within the town right away.
Yeah, we're, we're definitely, definitely concerned about that as far as the erosion. Like you said, I want to fill that in very soon as far as. Even getting, uh, topsoil in there to get some, uh, roots growing with the grass and, and try and get that solid there.
Yeah, Pat, if you want, you should go out and look at it.
Yeah, I think I'll run out there tomorrow.
Yeah, make sure you're, you're comfortable and Butch is comfortable because now's the time to fix it because if we don't. Do it now, later, if we had to start having the road settle and stuff, we're going to have trouble, so.
All right, got it.
Rob, did you go, Rob, I think you went out, right?
Yeah, I, I went out and looked at it, um, twice actually. Couldn't find it the first time. Cause I, I knew we didn't issue a permit yet and I saw this excavation going on and I said, well, that can't be it. Um, so, uh, my concern, uh, is, let's see. That wetland down there is a very, very, um, connected wetland, you know, it, it, it kind of connects, uh, starting at Booth Road. And goes all the way down to Jack's Brook.
Yeah, it's, it's a large area.
It's a really large area and it's, and it's really a nice wetland and I just, um. I think that maybe a demarcation of that wetland through markers, just to limit disturbance down there in the future. Might be an idea for this.
You mean like posts?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea. So what that is Nick is you just put posts in. At the wetland boundary every hundred feet and just stating a wetland area.
Okay, I can have, uh, I can have Charlie from Summers. Next time he's out, I can have him mark that out if need be, definitely.
Yeah, it's just a simple post and what it does is it warns everybody, people in the future. That, you know, that's a wetland there and you need to stay out of there. We do that on most sites recently. Uh, just because the people sell their houses and the next guy comes in and says, Jesus, beautiful down here and he, he makes a lawn.
Right.
So, I also, I also think, I can't see on this map, Russ, if there's silt fence. I, I see it. Uh, on the downside of the septic system, but is there silt fence, uh, below the house and pool area?
Julie, could you go to the right?
So, I don't know if the plan actually shows it, but we are going to install it tomorrow. Um, in that lower section where the stumps were and to the, I guess it would be the north and the south of that.
Okay, I think it should be denoted on this, on this map though, at some point.
There is a map, um, with an erosion control plan, I'm pretty sure.
Bottom left hand corner, it should have the erosion control, yeah.
Yeah, so at the last meeting, what we're concerned about is roof drainage. As your engineer. Done, or, or did we decide there are no g- uh, gutters?
Um, from what, what I understood that, and is the energy dissipator up to par for you guys? Cause if you go to the detail on the second page, it seems as if the footing drains and the curtain drain. From that the roof drains die into tie into that energy dissipator detail there.
We, we don't allow roof drainage to go to the ground anymore. We want it underground into an infiltrator system.
Okay.
Which is at the last meeting, we asked you to talk to your engineer. And tell them that Roxbury, and it's good for him to know, Roxbury no longer allows roof drainage to go to the ground. Footing drains have to go to daylight. They have to just outlet.
Right.
But roof drainage, we want to be put into footing and, and it's what's called infiltrators.
Right.
Which is nothing more than solid, slotted pipe under the ground and he's got to design that.
Okay.
And it cuts down on a lot of erosion and a lot of problems we've had throughout town. Because there's a lot of water that comes off a roof.
Okay.
Now the garage being a little smaller, he could look at that. And tho- those roof drains could go maybe do an energy dissipator. He's got to make that call.
Right.
And if you don't have any gutters and you don't capture the water, then you don't need that. And you're, you're, the water's going to sheet flow. It's not getting, uh.
But it wouldn't get funneled, right? Yep.
Right, it's the funneled focused water that we're trying to, to fix.
Cause it has the, the more, uh, velocity to it and it starts eroding quicker.
Right, you should see what we see over time.
I bet.
Some of the problems that we've run into where engineers said, oh, this isn't a problem. But with the kind of rainstorms we're having, you know, the four inchers and. You know, we're not getting more rain every year. We're just getting it in buckets. Uh, we're trying to combat that. Uh, by just making people, because it's easy to dig a trench and put this in when you're building. It's really hard. After everything's built, it's very expensive.
Right, Russ, I have a couple of other comments.
Go ahead.
Um, so the trees that were, all the, all the stumps in the topsoil and debris that was pushed over the hill. All those trees on that bank are going to die. Cause they've been backfilled, you know, multiple feet of, of debris and stuff on top of them. Um, so I, I guess what I'm getting at is, uh, I, I don't know how that's ever going to be stabilized.
Okay, I, I tried to separate the stump from, from the backfill and the topsoil like you're saying. Cause I, I graded that upper portion to get the, the top part off and then I was trying to get the stumps as far down the hill away from. The backfill as possible because I knew that burying stumps was not a good thing or not legal, so.
Right, but, but all those trees are going to die that, that are, that are backfilled up, you know, multiple feet up the tree. Um, and it doesn't show any erosion fence, as I said, along the toe of that slope. Um, but I also think it should be like a limited disturbance on this because it is, Russ, it all does go downhill to that wetland.
Right.
You know, so I just think there should be, whether the erosion fence that's put on this plan. Should be the limited disturbance or there should be a demarcation of limit of disturbance on this, because I think this could keep. Cascading down the hill to far closer and closer to the wetlands.
Right, have your engineer put that on the plan, okay Nick? Just air, right at the toe of the slope, show erosion control and that's the limit of disturbance. So there's no disturbance. When we approve it, if we approved the, the application, then there's no disturbance. Beyond the toe of that slope.
Right, okay, so we use right where it drops off as our, as our last spot where we touch.
Right, right at the bottom because there's all disturbance from there on up.
Okay.
Anything else, Rob?
No, that's it.
Okay. So Nick, next meeting, we need to end this because we only have 65 days. So we need to see that the, the limited disturbance. A, a roof drainage plan where the roof drainage goes into infiltrators and if it's not possible, in some cases it's not. Then your engineer needs to tell us why. And what he's going to do with the drainage on the garage. Where is it going to attach that to the system? If the garage has gutters, I don't know if it is or not, but if it does, he needs to tell us what he's doing with that water.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good, thank you.
All right, thank you Nick.
All right.
Next.
Okay, next is going to be Embry, 18 Brandywine Crossing.
Okay, Rob, you went out and saw that with Kathy, I believe.
Kathy and I went out and looked at it. Kathy, do you want to speak about it?
Um, yeah, so we, um, observed the wetland. Um, I don't, I guess on the north side at the beginning of the driveway, right there, right, we're right at the start of that driveway. Um. It's fairly close to the driveway, right? I, I guess it's inside the, the, um. Yeah, it's, it's, it's right alongside, but I think there is existing drive there or I, I think it's an existing driveway. Um. Uh, I don't know, Rob, did you have any other comments about that right there at the beginning?
Yeah, I think, uh, there, there's a, an old rubble stone wall. At the beginning that I think it, uh, is a border between the existing wetlands and the existing. You know, farm road or driveway that was put in a long time ago. I mean, I think it's referenced that that's going to be rebuilt.
That's correct.
Um, I would like to, because it, it really is kind of in the wetland and when I say wetland, I, I think this actually could be a vernal pool, not sure.
Where?
Well, it, it doesn't show it on this map. Uh, there's another map that shows the wetland, I believe. Yeah, uh, if you can blow, blow up on the driveway entrance. Julie? You can see the wetland flags. And they, they kind of follow the stone wall right at the entrance. Oh, we lost it. Yeah. Uh, yes, if you stay on this one Julie, um, you can see that. That stone wall that ta- kind of takes a bend right at the entrance.
Yep.
You know, that's the border of the wetlands and that stone wall actually continues. Up, uh, almost to about where that bed, that first corner, that left hand turn in the driveway is.
Yeah.
Um, but it's, you know, I mean, it's, when I say a stone wall, that's, uh, it, it's really, you know, just some rocks, piles of rocks. So. My question would be is how they're going to rebuild this because it's actually in the wetland. But it is a good border. For protection of this, of this.
Well, we, we could ask that the wall be built, a wall be built in that location.
Right, but, but I would worry, you know, it typically stone walls, you're going to put a, a, you know, an 18 inch. Deep, um, crushed stone base to the stone walls, which can kind of act like a curtain drain and drain a wetland.
Yeah, yeah, you're right. So it's better to leave it alone, but what are you thinking?
I, I don't know. I just think it's a good na- you know, a good, uh, protection for that wetland. And as I said, this wetland doesn't look like it has an outlet. You know, so I, I think it could be a vernal pool, so I think it could be of importance.
Well, a vernal pool would be a pool. It, it would be a.
It, it, there is a pool. I mean, there's a pool. I mean, there's water in it today. I went up and looked at it again today. You know, after the rain event.
A soil scientist looked at this, I'm sure, right? Cause he flagged everything.
Well, it was flagged, but it's not noted. I mean, it.
Well, then we, we need to ask the soil scientists to go back out and tell us if that's a formal pool or not. But if it is, say it is, is that going to change anything?
No, because we've got an existing driveway.
Right.
And I, I'm, I'm not, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm just stating a fact that I, that it could be a vernal pool. You know, my opinion is it could be a vernal pool. I don't know. I'm not a soil scientist.
But whether it is or isn't, would it change our opinion?
It wouldn't change mine because I think we have an existing driveway. I think it's just a matter of how we would, how we will protect it. I think that's really.
Well, do we have a construction plan and how they're going to build this driveway?
If, if, if I could, Russ, Brian Baker with Civil One.
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, yeah, so we.
Want to share your screen or you, you, you could use this drawing?
Uh, we could use this drawing.
All right.
Um, so the goal is to follow that existing driveway and all we want to do is to top dress it with. Some processed gravel because it's got, you know, leaves over top of it. It was, you know, an old dirt and gravel driveway that's been driven over, over the years. So we don't plan to do any sort of significant regrading. It's just to top dress. What's out there and we were going to leave that stone wall as is, you know, so we won't want to clear any trees. We don't want to. Do any grading outside of where the driveway currently is located. We just want to top dress that existing driveway. To get back into the site for the, for the home construction.
Okay. Rob, anything else?
Um, well, so, so, but on the application, it does address, uh, doing something with that wall. And I just would like to know what their, what the plan is.
Hmm, I don't. Let me take a look at that. Let me take a look at the application. I don't recall that, Rob, but you may be correct.
Wouldn't be the first time I'm wrong.
No problem. Yeah, so the, uh, the proposed activity is to. Uh, just improve the existing driveway for access to the proposed single family residence. And then for the description, it's the existing driveway into the property to be resurfaces, resurfaced with. Uh, three inches of processed gravel. No additional grading is required within the hundred foot regulated area. So, so no, we don't. It's in the same location. We make no, it's not on our application. We don't want to do anything with the, with the stone wall. Uh, you know, you're correct. It's there, provides a barrier. There's vegetation growing on the backside of it. Um, really, there's no grading involved other than bringing in. Material, processed gravel to top dress the, the driveway. I think that's the, so then we're not going to. Have potential for erosion because we're not disturbing any, uh, topsoil or subsoil and we're just following the driveway in. Which is the only way obviously to access this, uh, this, this site. It's a subdivision with a flag lot that was approved back in 1984. And it's just one of those that's been out there for a while. So, um, but luckily there is a driveway there, um. And I don't think top dressing that with processed gravel is going to have any impact to that, that wetland function as it, as it functions right now.
Okay, and then, uh, uh, let's see, I guess it would be east of the house site where you had the erosion fence up.
Yep.
And then you'll see there's kind of a low area that kind of goes north, south, east of the house.
Correct.
Okay, was that, uh, augured for wetland?
That was checked for wetlands. Um, it is in the report. He just, you know, he checked both. Uh, yeah, that low area in there and the rest of the property and that was not deemed to be any, uh, wetland or water course in that area. So he does mention that in the report. So the only wetlands are the well and at the entry. And then the water course, uh, along the far eastern side of the property that's flagged.
Okay. Other than that, I have no problem with this application.
Anybody else have any questions or any comments?
No, not me.
Rob, you want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve this as a regulated activity.
Do I have a second?
A second.
I'd like to add, uh, something to that under discussion. We approved this as a regulated activity and that the wall could never be disturbed or removed. So with that, do I have an appro- uh, all in favor of the motion plus the add-on?
Aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? So moved. Okay, we're good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, what's next?
Okay, we have to switch over. We're going to 91 Squire Road for the pond restoration. And, uh, Mark Low came in today and I just need to pull that up. And share that with you guys. So can you see it?
Yep.
Okay. This is what Mark dropped off.
Uh, Rob, did you go look at this?
Yes, I did. Well, let's see. I, I can't really read this unless it's blown up, this plan.
You're getting old on me.
That matter? And you want a little bit bigger? There.
There you go.
Russ, did you go look at it?
I did.
Okay. Does it say on here how he's going to get machinery to this?
No, but I assumed down the driveway and to the pond.
Okay.
Marcus here, right?
There's a.
The applicant Marcus here.
There we go. Yes.
Yeah, hi, Mark. How's he getting to this pond? Do you know?
Yes, he's coming into the driveway. And before the bridge, he's going to take a right. And he's gonna go over an existing. Wooden structure to, um, cross the grassy area there and to the pond.
Okay, that wooden structure goes over like an intermittent stream?
It's a runoff from the, uh, road. There's like a storm drain. And it's drying out.
Yeah, so. Did this pond ever really have water in it, Mark?
Yes, we used to skate on it in the wintertime.
No kidding?
No.
And I, I don't see a washout. I, I see pipes at the bottom. That are why the water's not being backed up. There's a culvert right at the bottom.
Yes.
And there's no water coming out of it, but there's another pipe. That comes down, it goes underneath, and it comes out, and that's where water is coming out.
It, it, there's a, um. Where he has the, um, stone construction area with the arrow going to it.
Yeah.
Be the overflow.
But I don't see a washout. I don't know what he's talking about a washout.
Underneath that, at like the base of the pond, there's a hole that's about three feet round that he's gonna fill.
Underneath the pipe?
There's multiple pipes there. There's, there's, I think I counted.
Yeah, there's multiple, multiple pipes.
There's one, one up high, there's one really low. And it looks like the water's running underneath that earthen dam. When I was there.
No, not really, Rob. There's another pipe. It's an old metal pipe.
It's a corrugated pipe. I don't know if that's.
The corrugated pipe is a big one. It's a six-incher. This is a four-incher, which goes underneath the corrugated pipe. And I went into the bushes, and that's where the water's coming out. So, in my opinion, Mark's got a plan, and he's not doing his homework. Because. There's no reach of the earthen dam. There really isn't. There's no washout. There's pipes that water is gonna drain out of. And I don't know how constructing a four-inch wide slope outlet. It's gonna solve anything unless you remove those pipes.
Four feet.
I'd be glad to meet you and show you. That this is flawed, because it's not gonna work, because. If you don't pull those pipes out of there. And you can't block it, because it's corrugated. You could block it, but it's gonna leak. You're not gonna have a pond. And if you disturb the earthen dam, then I become concerned with engineering. I'm concerned that it's, the, these things let loose. And then when these things let loose during heavy, heavy rain. And you have two separate outlets of town drainage going into this pond. So if we have heavy, heavy rain, there's gonna be a lot of water. Um, that earthen dam's gonna let go. And that brook is gonna be, gonna be the thing that suffers because of it.
The earthen dam, um, is that like where we would walk over?
Yes, yes. And there's nothing wrong with it.
Yeah, it's pretty.
That's something, something, I don't understand all these pipes, why they're there, and, but that's what's draining your pond. Now, how long have you lived there, Mark? A long time. You skated on it, because it doesn't, we don't get winters like that anymore.
Uh, this, uh, this February would be thirty years.
Wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, you've been here as long as I have.
It's, it's a long way from the valley. Yeah.
So you would know, what, do you think that the earthen dam got breached? And that's why?
There, there's a hole at the bottom that's about three feet round. And.
It's not a hole. It's called a corrugated pipe.
Okay, or whatever, um.
So that must have been blocked or something. But I'm telling you, it would be well worth your money to hire an engineer to take a look at this. And come up with a, with a better plan. Because I believe that those pipes gotta be pulled. And you should build some kind of structure, but it should be a, a cement structure. Like a little dam. Doesn't have to be a big thing. Uh, and, and. Cause if you do what this proposal is, you'll be out there in three years doing it again.
Okay.
I hate to see that happen, because it gets expensive.
Yeah. Um, I may.
And then Mark, and then Mark wants to place a hundred seventy-five cubic yards of muck in a floodplain. The whole thing's a floodplain. And you can't fill in a floodplain.
It's a plateau that goes up.
That's within the floodplain. It's within the hundred-year floodplain.
Okay.
And you should know, because your bridge got washed out, went right over it, didn't it?
Uh, yes, it did.
All right, then. So you can't, you can't add material to a floodplain.
Okay.
So that would have to be chucked offsite. Or another part of the property, you do have nine acres. Where it's, it's not near the brook. But then you're trucking over your new bridge and stuff, but that's up to you.
Sure.
He could, he could put, he could put the material there and let it dry out. He could do that. And, and you need to do that. You need to place it. And let it dry out. You could do that. Of course, we'd want that done in the summer, where the brook is less likely to flood. Um, and once it dries out, you could bring it to anywhere on that property. I, I noticed it got a beautiful field there. I'm sure it could be lost somewhere in that area.
He'd said he was gonna pilot there and then, um, level it out.
You can't, you can't do that in a floodplain.
Okay. So, what I should say is, now, what's my next move?
Yeah, you have many options. You could, you could get an engineer and come the next meeting and we'll have more discussion.
Okay, is that Mr. Neff?
It could be Mr. Neff. It could be Doug Divesta. It could be Paul Shemansky. There's a whole bunch of them. They're all pretty busy. So you could always pull this application right now. We don't charge a fee. And then when you get better plans, come back with it. Or you could keep going, but you gotta be, the next meeting, we have to make a decision. Or, or we could give in another sixty-five day extension with your permission. So that gives you three months. Keeping this application on. But you gotta get an engineer, Mark. It's too, it's in a floodplain. It's. I'm doing you a favor. You might not, you may think I'm trying to spend your money, and I'm not.
Uh, no, I used to be married to somebody who used to do that.
Me too. So, so, um, I think it's a great plan, to be honest with you, to dig that pond out and have a pond there. I just think that you need to look at what those pipes are, you know, why they're there. Um, and what's the best way? Because I think the earthen dam is fine. It's the pipes that are a problem.
Okay, so the pipes have to be removed.
I, I, I think they need to be, otherwise you're not gonna have a pond. They're at the bottom. Now, maybe at one time, they weren't at the bottom. That, that was the outlet. But all that silt, now those pipes look like they're at the bottom, but they used to be, you know, at the top of the pond. It could be that. Because that pond is really filled in. I mean, it's.
Yeah.
There's a lot of silt on there.
Okay, so I will reach out to an engineer. I would like to keep this alive, at least for another meeting. Because, um, I, I'd like to, I don't feel like bringing my skates back up into the attic, if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's up to you. You could pull it in any time.
Yeah, I, I would like the extra time to get a, uh, reach out to, let's say, Mr. Neff or someone to do that.
Right. Rob, do you agree? Or do you have other concerns? Because he should know now.
No, I agree with you, Russ. I think an engineer would be a smart move.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good plan, but it needs to be thought out better.
Okay, very good. All right.
All right, thank you.
Everybody. Thank you, Mr. Renzo. Good night.
Good night. New business, Town of Roxbury Cardinal Engineering, replace bridge number one nineteen dash zero one five Minor Bridge Road. Over Camp Brook. Too bad we didn't do this before we paved it. Anyway. This is a huge culvert. Must be. Oh, Gary, what's a sixty? It's a big one. And this is up for Minor Bridge, heading towards Bridgewater.
Yes.
About a quarter mile. You wouldn't even know it's there unless you got out of your car and walked down the hill and it.
Yeah, you're.
Huge culvert. Now, I've looked at this with Jim Conway many times. Jim Conway, Barbara Henry, Butch. And quite frankly, I'm very practical. I don't see any problem with this culvert, but the engineers know better than me. And then if I say we shouldn't do this, and a car, and a truck falls into it, I'm not gonna be in good place. So Gary says we need to replace it, then we need to replace it.
It should, it should be replaced. I, it, it is exhibiting a lot of, uh, serious, uh, erosion or corrosion of the steel. Uh, it's a combination steel culvert in a, uh, concrete bottom. And the bulk of the, um, corrosion of steel is at the concrete. Uh, steel interface. And there's a lot of, um. Holes popping through the, uh, the steel. And there's a lot of, uh, material. Uh, seeping through those holes and into the brook. So it's losing embankment fail slowly on the end, outside, going into the inside. And, uh, there is some defamation in the, uh, the culvert itself at the top. So it's, it's, it should be replaced. And, uh, the town decided to go after it, go after state funding. So the Connecticut, State of Connecticut is gonna be paying fifty percent of the project. Um, the town's paying the other fifty percent. And, uh, we are replacing it with a concrete. Rein for a, uh, pre-stress concrete, pre-cast concrete structure.
Okay.
All right, um, the project will be, uh, we're planning to go out to bid the end of this year. Beginning of January, beginning of next year, and start construction, beginning of next construction season. Again, that's pending. Town of Roxbury issuing a, a wetlands permit. And we are also waiting for the Corps of Engineers and the, uh, Connecticut. Department of Energy and Environmental Protection issue this, uh, four oh one water quality certificate for the project. Uh, we've been through all the meetings with DOT, the Core and DEEP. So, uh, we submitted the applications for those permits, and, uh, they're all in the review process right now. So, uh, again, this, it's a formality we go through every time we do a project like this.
Right.
And, uh, the, the DEEP is pretty thorough in their review. Uh, Fisheries has been out there to look at the project. They made some suggestions. Because, um. Again, Russ, if you've been down there, it's, it's a fairly steep grade in the culvert.
Right.
And, uh, so we're trying to slow it down. So we will be installing baffles within the culvert. With natural stream bed material in the baffles. And that's a suggestion from, uh. Well, from my engineers and from the Fisheries to, uh, to allow for fish passage up the, uh, the brook, Camp Brook. We're using all standard, uh, um, protocols with regards to erosion protection control that. DOT and DEEP requires on their projects. And, uh, uh, one other issue came up during the, um, interagency meeting, which is the DEEP Corps of Engineers, DOT meeting. Uh, we had to research, uh, endangered species, and there are bog turtle turtles down there.
Yep.
We had to hire a herpetologist to investigate the area and there are turtles. So, uh, built into the contract documents will be, um, means and methods for the contractor to make sure that, uh. The hab, the bog turtle habitat stays intact, and they protect any turtles that do end up within the construction area. Yeah, typically what we did, we did one up in Washington like that just recently. And, uh, we had to, uh, the herpetologists had to come on board the very beginning stages of construction. They did a, he did a, uh, a program with the contractor, telling him how to handle the bog turtles and what to do and what not to do. And. So the contractor, I'll, I'll say is, was certified by the herpetologist. And, uh, on occasional basis, he also showed up during construction to make sure that, uh, uh, the contractor was doing their thing, turtles. On all, like you said, it's a busy road, so we love money, get it done quickly.
Yep.
And, uh, um. Again, the quicker you do a project, the less, uh, damage you do to any, to the environment, period.
Right, right. All right, we need to go look at it. So we'll all go look at it, and then we'll report back next meeting. And also during that time, we'll look at the plans and stuff. So, so, so many. Agencies and people that do this and only this. Uh, I'm not too worried about it. I've already looked at. A lot of these plans. Um, my concern was bedrock. And, and you know, I didn't want change orders, because we didn't know there was bedrock where we're planning on putting the culvert. But as you know, you guys did borings, you know where the rock is, and you've designed for that. So we don't run into a change order.
Right.
Um, so, uh, anybody who wants to go out, this is just up the road from Minor Bridge. If you want to go with me. Um, let me know. I'll go with anybody who wants to go or, but everybody should probably take the time to go take a look at it.
Again, as, as Pat mentioned, at the very beginning of the meeting, we're also doing the Davenport Road Project for you, for the town.
Right.
Which I, I believe is turning out very well. Aesthetically, at least. This one, you won't see anything. Once the job is done. The slopes are red and vegetated again. You don't even know the, the culvert's down there. Except there will, there will be, uh, brand-new guy railing up on top.
Right. How long's the road gonna be closed?
Uh, we expect four to, four to five months.
Yeah, that's a big one.
No, we've had longer. Uh, we, we just finished up two projects in Washington. Each of them lasted, uh, two months apiece. So, um.
Still Minor Bridge is a major artery, but people are gonna probably go on sixty-seven, I guess. So the people on Weller's Bridge should get ready for more rubble strips.
We'll have to put out extra cops.
Love you, Russ. All right, Gary, thank you.
Take a look at it. And, uh, if you have any interim questions before the next meeting, give me a call. I'd be happy to answer and or come out and go over the project with you personally.
Okay, thanks a lot, Gary. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to put Neil Rusko for a house on the agenda. The house is on, uh, Painter Ridge Road. We approved the driveway. I thought we approved the house, but they weren't sure at the time exactly that the house was going where they were showing. So Neil's had to come back, uh, to get this house approved. We did approve the driveway.
Uh, motion, I'll make a motion to add this to the agenda.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you can see the house, it's behind a ledge. So that wetland there. So you could see the house that's behind a ledge. So that wetland there there's no way where they're putting a house will have an effect. But if you look on the other side, there's a stream. Uh, an intermittent stream down there. And I believe I, I walked this with you, Rob, right?
Yes.
So Neil, is the house going exactly where the original plan showed? Or did you move it? You don't mute, Neil. Maybe he's sleeping, I don't know. Neil, you here?
Still in the meeting, but he's muted and his camera's off.
Yeah, maybe he walked away. It looks to me like it's in the same place.
Oh, Russ, I can answer that. Neil did tell me he's gonna keep the house basically in the same place. It might be twisted one or two feet, just to square it up a little bit.
Okay. And he's outside the regulated area in both locations. It, house, the only place it could go to be non-regulated is where he's putting it.
It's basically the same location.
Right. John, do you know if he's got roof drains?
Uh, I can't answer that. I, he said he, he wasn't going to, but that's you know, not confirmed.
Yeah, I can't, we can't really approve it without him talking to us.
Uh, he, he did tell me that in person, um.
Do, do you have his text by any chance?
No, no, I don't.
Russ.
Yes, there you are, Neil.
I finally figured it out.
Okay. Are you gonna have roof drains, Neil?
I am not.
Okay, it's just gonna be no gutters, okay.
No gutters.
All right. Anybody have any questions?
I just uh, one on the uh, be the west side, Neil. Um, going towards that stream. I see silt fence on the west side, but nothing on the east side.
Um, hold on a sec.
Maybe I'm missing it, it, I.
Where, whereabouts on the uh?
Well, see the hundred foot setback from the stream?
Yes.
Along that. It's downhill to the wetlands or to the stream, right?
Uh, goes up and then it goes down.
Okay, okay. So no need for it there.
Yeah, I see it. It does go up. I remember that. Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'll look for a motion.
I'll uh, move to approve this as a well, the driveway was regulated, right?
Right, and it's septic. So the house, I don't think would be regulated. We only require permits for all new houses, but that's just a town thing.
Okay. Uh, I'll move to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Neil, you're good to go, buddy.
Thanks, folks.
All right, have a great night.
You too. Bye bye.
Any other business?
Excuse me, Russ, can we go back to sixteen Painter Hill Road? This was the third month. Um, it was on the agenda. Do you want to do a motion to close it out or are you gonna keep it open and talk to Paul? Because at that point, Paul should extend the application.
No, we, no, the application was approved. It's been on, it's been on the agenda. Well, oh, you're right. We need to vote on the trees, don't we?
On the trees, yes.
Right, yes.
The other one was, was approved last month.
Right, we need to approve the trees, right?
Yes.
Okay, I thought we, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the application at sixteen Painter Hill Road for, for the tree plantings. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, good job, Julie, as always. Thank you.
You're welcome. So then uh, you just have John's wetlands enforcement report.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Uh, the only thing I have to say is pretty much Russ knows about everything. We all know about Painter Hill. The runoff there with Peter Herbert that's being addressed currently. Uh, Grebla, same thing that's being handled. I, the tree cutting today and carriage is the only other thing that was brought to light that the commission probably didn't know about, but is well aware of now. So I really don't have any enforcement issues to bring up. Um, there is the non-regulated. There's that, that we, that I submitted. Uh, it seemed to slow down a little bit this month, a little, for a little while, but again, it's, seems like it's picking up once again. You know, hard to tell what's going on.
Generators still, huh?
Oh my God, John. Hey, look at that first one.
Yeah, you, you put one in, geez, must be rich.
No, 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 not yet. I've been sitting in my driveway. Well, one of these days I'll get installed.
Okay, thank you, John.
No, no problem. Thank you all.
Yeah, any other business?
Russ.
Look for, go ahead.
One other thing, we, we were discussing uh, the timeline for applications. And adding them to the agenda last minute.
Sorry, Rob, but that's required, it's state law. You gotta accept them right up to the day of the meeting. And although, all the land use administrators complained, but you have to accept them.
So how do they expect us to review applic-, uh, the, the information?
Well, you, you could accept it and then not act on it. Till the next meeting. Right?
Okay.
Yeah.
We're the only town that does that, you know, that.
Everybody does that. And if they're not, they're not following the regulation and that's not the way to be. In, in my opinion. But we do tell people you need to get them in by Friday. We don't tell them. We, you need to get it in by the Thursday before the meeting. That's what we tell them. And the commission doesn't have to vote it on the agenda. If there's a reason, but the law is you have to accept them up to the date of the meeting.
So the reason would be just that we didn't have the time to review it, right?
Yeah, but you could accept the application and then not act on it and having a whole month to review it. And that was the argument of why it should be allowed.
Is just one other question is the agenda, the agenda is posted on the town website. And when is that, and when is that prepared?
That has to be done forty-eight hours for the meeting?
Because we don't work on Monday. We have to get it to Jimmy. I usually work on it Thursday afternoon or Friday morning and Jimmy will get it posted by noon on Friday. And so that's our timeline to make sure everybody is there and physically has time to do it.
So if we accept an application for someone for something and there's a, you know, a neighbor that wanted to see it, it's not posted on the agenda. And we act and post, we act on it.
No, you can't act on it.
We could.
Have to, you know, in that case, you need to accept it. That's all the law requires. You don't have to act on it.
No, but if we did. I'm just saying like
Why would we?
Well, I'm just saying like public knowledge, if someone, if someone is looking at the agenda to see you know, what's coming up before the wetlands commission and it's being added after the agenda is posted.
Talk to your local state representative.
I'm done talking about it.
Not, not getting though. Um, but you do bring up a good point, Rob. Thanksgiving. Our next meeting is Thanksgiving week. And I think some people might be on vacation. So I'm wondering whether we wanna move the meeting up a week. I'm bringing up Thanksgiving on my our, our meeting is no, it isn't. Yeah, it is. It's November twenty-second. That's a Tuesday. Thanksgiving's the twenty-fourth, a Thursday. Do we wanna keep it that way or do we wanna move it up to the fifteenth?
Excuse me, the fifteenth is Board of Finance. I wouldn't be able to cover.
Well, we'll have a joint meeting.
You could do that. That could be a first.
Well, what, what day that week would be good for you, Julie? Any day? Pardon?
The, I got ZBA that Thursday night. So if you wanted to do something like Monday or Wednesday, we could do that.
I say Wednesday, the sixteenth?
I can't make that.
Okay.
Oh, wait a minute. No, hold on here. Uh, yeah, I can make that because, yeah, what I'm looking at is earlier in the evening. I'm, I'm good.
Well, we could keep it to twenty-second as long as people tell me they're gonna be able to be there. I know Julie won't be able to be there if it's live and it won't be live. It will be Zoom. Because Julie, you're on vacation?
I'm on vacation.
Then why would you wanna be there?
I really don't want to, but my options. I mean, I really don't wanna have to ask Jimmy to cover because Jimmy has helped me out with a family death and then a medical emergency. So I hate to do that to him, but honestly, I haven't had a vacation in three years since this started.
Right, so what's, anybody got a problem with moving the meeting up to the sixteen?
Nope, I don't, Russ, but uh, you'll have to notify like Neil Marcus. And you know probably people that are being continued to the next meeting.
Well, who's being continued? Uh, the guy with the pond?
The guy with the pond, Neil Marcus.
Yeah, that's it. That's not a big deal, right, Julie? Karen could do that.
Big deal and Minor Bridge, that's being continued, yep.
Yep. Well, Pat's here, so he could tell the engineer Gary that we're gonna move it up to a Wednesday. So I'll make a motion to move the Thanksgiving meeting to November sixteenth, Wednesday. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so don't forget. I know, I'll remind Karen to send out a reminder.
Okay.
It's probably better Thanksgiving weeks, I'm not, not week anyway, so.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, aye.
Good night, everybody, and thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.